For the village of Campden Hills, August twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. Mr. Brown, could I have a roll call, please?
Sure, Mr. Frederick.
Here.
Mr. Gobarski.
Here.
Mr. Kopeck.
Here.
Ms. Turney.
Here.
Mr. T.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
We do have a quorum, excellent.
And we have the village attorney here, village administrator, and staff liaison.
It would be the liaisons, just absent.
Yeah, they're both absent.
Okay. Item number three, motion to approve the minutes of the zoning commission meeting of July twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four.
So what?
I got a motion by Ms. Gobarski, a second. A second by Mr. Kopeck. Any errors, comments, criticism, or suggestions at all?
Bottom of page four.
Yeah, note.
Note, not.
Yeah. Yeah, just change note to not, yeah, drop the E. I think it's, I think it's meant to be noted the prudence in not having.
Oh, yeah, not, yeah.
Yeah, not.
Not having.
Yeah, it's one of the limitations of spell check.
Yeah.
All right. No big deal, page three, paragraph one, two, three, four, five, just name spell my, there's an extra E in my name, no big deal.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but all the other ones are good, that I saw. That's all, I think that's all I had, those two things. Uh, can I get a voice vote to approve as amended? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries to approve as amended. All right, back to the agenda, public comment. Nice, nobody has public comment?
Well, I should introduce myself, I'm Kathleen Judy, I'm an attorney that's been hired to help with the zoning map, with respect to all these things.
Okay.
And so I'm here to find out where you guys are at, and, you know, zoning map is something that should, you know, be adopted in the long with your zoning ordinance, so I'm hoping somebody can bring me up to speed on how far you are, and, you know, what, sort of maybe somebody that'll, I guess, help me with the map end of what's going on, so my job is to take a look. Oh, sure. The recording isn't taken now. Oh, all right, so I'm Kathleen.
Well, your three minutes are up now.
Start over, go. Does it start over?
No, no, all good.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kathleen Judy, I am an attorney that's been hired on an ad hoc basis to take a look at the open space that you want to put into your open space, into your zoning map. You're gonna have a text amendments, I mean, you're gonna have a text to your zoning ordinance, and you're gonna have a map. And so my job, as I understand it, is to take a look at the record of all the different open space, to make sure it's protected and preserved, and in all the right, I guess what it is, is there are restrictions of record and covenants. There's a lot of ways that the open space can be restricted, and some farmland, there's farmland protection, there's the open space plan that the township has, and there's a conservation easements that have been put onto it. So all these different covenants and restrictions of record will be in the record, the recorder's office. And we've got PIN numbers and ways to look them up, all these different parcels. And so what I'm looking for from you is to be able to narrow down what you want me to look at, as far as making sure what parcels are protected in your zoning ordinance, and also identified on the map. And that's why I'd like to be able to work with whoever's gonna be doing the map, if it's gonna be Trotter. I've done a little bit of research on the, where the old ordinance is, and I'm not sure how much you're gonna change. I've also seen all the different parcels in the township, and there's different maps. And there was even a two thousand and ten Campden Hills green infrastructure map that I'm sure you guys are probably looking at as well. But I wanna put all that together and make it, you know, beef up this plan, because you've got a lot of potential development out there. And people that know me, I've been involved with open space for a long time, I've kinda moved, but am back and have been back for the last five years, and I wanna help you again, so that's my job, as I understand it.
All right, great, thank you.
And you've interviewed with, interviewed Jerry, right?
Right, I talked to Jerry, too.
Yeah, Jerry, Jerry has stated that there's, some of these parcels have covenants, and the easy ones are the forest preserve and the township, that's documented, and we've got those parcel maps. But Jerry was always, there's these other smaller parcels that he wants to make sure we put his open space and record the covenants, and then somehow give it to Carmen that we have the text. And then the map also shows it is open space, that that stays preserved going forward. And Jerry, you know, we talked the last time, some of these aren't right, because the Garfield Farm has various ways that it's open space protected. And he wants that nuance to be somehow recorded going forward. And the key is just to find any recordings that are not the township and the forest preserve. And that's the job that Kathleen will do at the recorder of deeds, and find those type of parcels that Jerry says are scattered around the village. So that's kind of the catch.
Where we have nature preserve areas that are actually under the homeowner association of the subdivision. Is that what he's referring to?
He was, but those, we were not really focused on those, because they're in a PUD, and they've got their own HOA protection that can't be built on, because that's a recorded document, too. We're not worried that that's gonna get redeveloped.
Well, I'm not worried about it, but if we're gonna be accurate, let's include it, right?
Yeah.
The other thing is, what I brought up from the first meeting, is that I feel the township open space properties should be delineated on the map as Campden Township open space properties, no different than the King County Forest Preserve. So that, they may physically be in the village or part of the village, but they need to be clearly shown on the maps that they're township or forest preserve.
Yes.
No problem.
So, I found these maps that are part of the green infrastructure, two thousand and ten report, that are very interesting and pretty good, because it focuses right in on Campden Hills. So, and I've kind of just sort of went through it and numbered the parcels. I mean, they break it down to from public land to private open space parcels, and it's just focused in on the village. So I'd like to show you guys this, if you're.
Yeah, when we get to doing the maps, I think that would be a good part to bring that in. And Jim is gonna be the keeper of all research, and then try to get the match right. And we should be able to, I'm sorry.
That's not on. The farmland protection is recorded, and we just wanna make sure our map doesn't miss any of those that over the last decade happened, and we just didn't get it onto our maps. So that's the other thing that we'll do.
I think right now is not the time.
Not the time to dig into it right at the moment?
Dig into the details right now, because we're still on a very large surface look at this all. So you can, maybe if you listen for where we're at, you might get a scope of where we're at. And then if you're looking for more direction and guidance on what to specifically look at, then I think we're gonna steer you towards Mr. Brown to help focus your time and energy appropriately, okay? I do want to just make a quick comment, to take a step back about the general purpose of why, what we're here, why we're doing this, all right? So we're here to classify the zoning purpose for a particular land, all right? That's our, we have a piece of land, and what's the purpose of that land? Is that land for farming, is it for commercial, is it open space, whatever it is? We wanna do that for the benefit of the residents, so that they, they know what, and the land is protected, all right? So we are here to identify land parcels and match it to its purpose. So if we have some piece of land that says it's residential, and there's actually a business on it, then we need to match those, all right? That's one of our tasks, all right? But the overreaching goal here, what we're trying to do, is to classify the zoning purpose of the land, right? The purpose is, you know, and also find any errors or missions or anything like that, which Kathleen is gonna be helping us with. And we wanna protect the land uses, you know, we don't wanna control them, we wanna protect them. So if we have certain, you know, residential areas, we don't wanna all of a sudden put a chemical plant, you know, or whatever, you know, inside of it. Same thing with open space areas, we wanna protect that. We have a strong history of open space at Campden Hills, the village, and also the township. But the zoning ordinance is going to help us protect those zoning purposes. The, this is really zoning, so I don't, sometimes we get a little bit into the weeds in getting too, too many layers of stuff. So we really have to focus on the big thing, the purpose of the zoning is the purpose of the land, all right? There are nuances to it, but I get it, you know, like forest preserve versus township open space, but open space, open space. And the idea for us is that we have certain, there are certain guidelines, like if the, you know, we don't, you can't just like have open space, you can't, all of a sudden the open space, we can't just put condos on it, not to say that they would, you know, but there are restrictions on those types of things, we're trying to protect that, all right? So keep that in mind, when we're zoning, we're zoning for the purpose of the land, all right? What we feel was the benefit for the residents of that land, all right? Okay, having said that, moving, no other public comments, moving to item five. Introduction, review, and discussion of the draft, article nine, off-street parking and loading. I did notice in your staff comments, Mr. Brown, talked about the, kind of a trend, I guess, in planning, which talks about not having any restrictions, basically, just let, let them utilize what they want. I will just give my own opinion, but I think right now I would just, I would tend to leave, leave the draft article in and not eliminate all parking, that would be my, that would be my preference. Not that we couldn't tweak it or something, or change some of the, maybe more reasonable, but that would be my initial impression right now, without having a discussion with the rest of the commission. So with that, article, wanna go through article nine? Anybody else have an initial comments before we go through the draft article nine? If not, we'll start going through article nine, which is.
I didn't think I put page numbers down, but.
Yeah, it's page seventeen of the overall packet, right at the end of the, right at the end of the notes. But it's page seventeen of the overall packet. All right. Looks like the first change, A, B, and I, you'll reorder that, C, D, E, but that's fine. But you basically combined, looks like combined C and D, and put change in use and change in intensity. Would that, does that be the correct, the change in use?
I think there's a little more than that, maybe.
Okay. What would, what would be more? Make sure I understand the intent.
So what the first two are saying, so you, let's, example is best, so we have a coffee shop in Roscoe, and it is required to have five coffee parking spaces. And then the coffee shop goes away, and another use comes in. And now that same space is required to have ten parking spaces. So the current provisions would require the new business to provide ten off-street parking spaces.
Correct.
I combined the two, but I said it's simply allowed to continue non-conforming.
Okay.
Because all that's gonna happen is the new business is gonna request the variance in the standards. And if we wanna be business friendly, then we approve it. If you want another opportunity to say no to a business, then this is one way you can do it. Anything, I think, almost anything that would have high or unusual parking demand is a special use anyway. So you're gonna have this opportunity to review. And I've been through this in other communities where these new businesses come in, and they are not meeting the parking standard. And already, you know, they're new to town, and they're upset, because they're having to jump through the hoops and go through this process. And I don't think I've ever seen one of these parking variances turned down. So like, why are we making people do it? So, you know, if you take, what we have is a built-up downtown area, so how would you create more parking spaces? What, would you knock down a building to do that? Is that worth it? Would you cover over some more grass area? We just, how would you do it? You can't physically do it, at least not easily here. So it's almost like, either you tell the business, go away, we're only gonna accept something that allegedly has parking, or less parking demands, or we're gonna approve the variance. So I'm just saying, just forget it and just allow it to exist.
Okay.
You know? When a new business comes in, so if we had a new building built, then it would have to either comply with the special use ordinance for parking, or this table. In that case, if it were new, it would establish it. A lot of these aren't terribly different, so there's a lot of cases where you really aren't gonna encounter that, but it does come up. And like I said, when I was in another community, it seemed to come up with virtually every new business that wanted to come in.
All right.
It was just kind of frustrating for everyone.
Okay.
I know, but at the same time, if you allow a business to come in, and he overwhelms a parking facility, then you've got, you've created problems for all the existing businesses that are there.
And, and that's why I said, I think the things that would really overwhelm the demand are special uses anyway, and you would evaluate it on that way, and say, hey, somehow you're gonna have to come up with more parking spaces.
Okay, so you're assuming then that.
Yeah, I'm assuming our tables are, I'm assuming our tables are correct, it's a big assumption.
Yeah.
All right? It's a big assumption. And then I'm assuming that, that, you know, that whatever that was, that coffee shop, the parking demand for that is really not gonna be substantially different, or less than what that new use is coming in. And in my experience, now let me take that, so chains will come in, they have their own parking formulas. I mean, they've been doing this all over the country, and they know how many, Walgreens knows how many parking spaces. It's normally less than what an ordinance requiring is. A new business coming in, you know, some guy, he has, you know, mom's secret pizza recipe, and he wants to open a pizzeria, he probably has no clue what he's gonna generate in parking. And in that case, our table might be of some value. But I get what you're saying, and that is always a possibility, it's always a possibility that the business is wildly successful, and you have, you don't know where to park cars. I always used to joke, that's a good problem to have in your downtown, so, but I just don't think it's gonna happen now.
But at the same time, what I see happening, though, is you have permitted uses that could dramatically overwhelm, you know, the parking.
Yeah.
So that means that you can't reject it, it's not a special use, because it is a permitted use for that site. But yet, you know, they could dramatically overwhelm the limited.
Well, I mean, you do what you want, I'm just telling you, I've been through this, and it really got old on everyone's part, on the business's part, got old on staff's part, it got old on the village board's part, why in the world are we doing this? I go, why don't you change the ordinance and we get rid of our downtown parking requirements? I mean, maybe we won't have this problem, I'm just telling you, you don't, you'd never have to take any of my advice. So I'm not gonna belabor this anymore, if you don't like it, then, you know, ignore it, and I can switch it back.
We don't have that many sites.
I just don't wanna spend a lot of time, you know, I wanna move forward. If you don't like that, then, you know, I understand your point, so. We've already had a major parking controversy in this parking lot, so it is something that we have to pay attention to. Then, 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 then we can go back to the other two. I'm, you know, again, I'm just telling you, from twenty years of experience, and what I've been through in numerous communities, I've had the other problem. Maybe you won't have it, then, maybe you wanna keep this, then it's fine.
Chris, your experience?
I guess I do have concerns with allowing, you know, just change in use or whatever, and just grandfathering it, because there are some uses, and I, you know, where it could cause issues, and, I mean, it is a little bit of a headache for staff and for the board to kind of handle those additional variances, but at least it gives, it gives the board another bite at the apple, so to speak, if, you know, if they really want the business or not. And I guess I might agree with Mr. Kopeck, in the sense of there's not a huge downtown area, so I don't know how often, how many variances in the past that, you know, the village has given, so.
But I don't think we've given any, I don't think it's been an issue. So I can put it back, which also tells me to believe, it probably doesn't matter what we. Which side I fall on here.
Any opinions?
No, I mean, I feel like the square footage of the, whatever is going to be renovated into a new business is gonna dictate somewhat limitations on what type of business would replace something. So, you know, in that aspect, I don't know that the parking needs are gonna go from very small to incredibly large. I mean, you're probably parking a handful of spaces different, because again, we do have a small downtown area, so the spaces of the building itself is gonna dictate the occupancy somewhat as well.
I think the type of business will also dictate that as well, so. Consensus for me to move on?
I mean, just to remind everybody that it wasn't just this parking lot controversy. I mean, we don't have a lot of parking in both commercial areas to start with.
All right, so is it, the consensus, and is it gonna be put it back the way it was?
Put it back.
Okay, okay, all right. Very good. Moving on, computation requirements, multiple lands, C, nine point two, next page. Looks like you just retitled A, B, and C.
Correct.
Just for clarification. That looks pretty straightforward. Nine, three, you got this, certain uses listed in five, five point one are not listed in nine one, therefore do not have vehicles. So that's clarification that the tables do not, not reflect. So I'm fine with that. Next page, under item C, provisions of electric charging stations, you just basically, it's not to specialize it, right? So spaces reserved for, they just count towards the minimum. So whether you want them all electric or not, it's a space, it's a space, whether it has an electric charging station or not, that's fine. Okay. Into table nine point one, I see the columns in the right, under red, obviously those are changes. I'm assuming that it says point, I don't know what there was before, but looking at the first column at the bottom of the page of nine point one, housing services for the infirm, point five dwelling unit per patient room or special use. And.
Is that, is that a question, then, which way you wanted to go?
Or are you giving, are you giving the option, or is it suggested, what is your thought process?
For, I'm sorry, the housing?
Yeah.
Yeah, which, which would you want? We get, all of those are special use now, so you could just say per special use, or you could put zero point five per dwelling unit, patient room, whatever. Again, the, these types of, they are businesses, they come in, they know exactly how much parking they need.
I would say per special use.
Special use.
All right.
They, I mean, a formula like this, it's.
All right, let's scrap, let's scratch the point five dwelling per, I can just use per special use?
I had one real quick comment back on provision C.
Ah, C.
With the electric vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think it's, I'm okay with including or allowing those to be included in the minimum parking requirements, but I think if we're going to do that, maybe we should potentially add something to the effect of like, no more than half. Because what is to stop somebody from going, they're all reserved for electric, and then all of a sudden, nobody else for that business? And I'm not.
I see what you're saying.
It, it's, there's some twisted person out there who may come up with that. But I'm just saying, if we limit it to maybe no more than half of the minimum number of requirements or something, otherwise you might, if there's parking issues, maybe.
Or you make them not available, or not restricted.
Right, or not reserved just for electric, that would be the only thing, I mean, I'm just.
Maybe a counter would not necessarily be reserved.
And I'm like, like I said, I'm not trying to nitpick, but I just, there's probably somebody out there who could.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with Chris that we shouldn't, we need to put a limit on it, because a lot of these spaces are paid, you know, services. And they also pay the owners of the parking lot for their ability to sell electricity. So therefore, it's to the owner's advantage to put in a lot of EV charging stations. And so I think, you know, maybe twenty-five percent, I think, would be a really reasonable number at this point, because we're not talking about quarter of the cars being EVs. So I think you definitely would cap it at, I would cap it at a quarter.
All right, can we just add that? So was, was you like, we like the idea that they're, they count, that EV charges count for it, but, but there can be no, there should be a maximum of twenty-five percent EV stations?
Of the required parking space.
Yes, of the required parking space, okay.
Twenty-five percent.
Yeah. All right, pressing on to the next page, which would be page twenty of forty-eight, it's the second, it's a nine point one on the table, so it's the top of the next part of the table. It says suggest per special use or use approval, and that's for department store, membership club, or superstore, yeah, definitely. So just use per special use. Heavy equipment sale of service suggestion none. Yes, if there's no guidance, like you have a lot of guidance below, like one for three hundred square feet, would it be for special use then as well? You had no suggestions there, so.
No, I mean, the other thing would be per employee, I don't really like those too much.
Right.
Say, you know, one per employee, that would probably accommodate a guest parking. Again, if someone's gonna put in like a heavy equipment business, I mean, there's gonna be parking out there.
Right.
I mean, the whole, the whole thing's gonna be, you know, parking for equipment, so. I just don't know how to quantify it, and I didn't really find, you know, any consistency in standards, so.
Well, per special use would be one way around, or one way to solve it, right? It's per special use, be consistent. If we can't come up with a number of, you know, you know, square footage, or people, or something, let's just do that. All right. The next one, home centers for special use, it's fine, grocery stores, it says suggest one for three hundred. That seems similar to professional services, banquet halls, just looking at the other ones at one for three hundred, convenience store, studio, physical activity, so. Yeah, I, I have a problem with one for three hundred square feet, that's fine, let's just do that. Okay? Restaurant, the next one, one for two hundred. Kind of in between, what, a full-service restaurant? So full-service restaurant's one for one hundred, so it's a little more lenient, since it's limited service, you said, so. So you have fewer, fewer cars there.
Yeah, people are in and out much quicker at the turnovers.
Okay, yeah, okay, all right, let's just go with that, one for two hundred. Airport, I'm just keep going down the column, airport, special use, yep, I like that. Let's get a little small fly-in or something. Let's see, fitness recreation, one for two hundred. I'm assuming that's more of a turnover, think people go in, go out, or?
Yeah, but it can be, you know, their, their peak hours can be pretty crowded. They have the classes normally in the morning or evening hours, the yoga classes or whatever, and it gets, it gets crowded, so.
All right, then the one below it, which is more than ten thousand feet, you've got per special use, but it's less than ten thousand feet, you've got one for two hundred.
Yeah, the first one, the ten thousand under was not a special use approval, that's why.
Oh, it was not, okay.
That's, we divided that up.
That's right.
Based on the ten thousand foot threshold.
Yeah, yeah.
Above ten thousand, or ten thousand above is a special use, that's why.
Okay, okay, well, thanks for clarifying that. All right, and then you look like you've got new museum, cultural facility, one for four hundred, and performing arts, point seven five per patron seating, all right? That sounds like those are kind of the standard for, in that book of, or book of parking, that reference guide. All right, sports club, for special use, that sounds good. Preschool, not listed in the current ordinance, daycare center standard is one for five hundred. Well, if a daycare is one for five hundred, then preschool sounds about the same? I would just go one for five hundred. So it's a pretty logical thing to continue that.
Okay.
Preschool, one for five hundred. The daycare is that, so. All right, next to school, alternate education services, two per classroom and office. Staff comment. Parking for schools can be approved with special use. So do we wanna just, so I guess that's an option, two per classroom and office.
Yeah, for actually all of the schools.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, is it, when you say two per classroom and office, is that two per office?
So if you had, if you had one office and two classrooms, then that's three.
Three.
Spaces, so it'd be two times three.
All right. It says parking for schools can be approved with a special use, so there's a question there, do we wanna make it a special use, or do you just wanna do two per classroom and office? or do you just wanna do two per classroom and office, is that the question? Um, where you had that long staff comment, and above that.
Yeah.
Two per classroom, so are you asking a question, do we wanna use?
Yeah.
Two per classroom or special use? I, I would say special use, because I don't know how big the school is, or I would just go with special use.
Is that comment applied for all the schools then?
It does, yeah, that's why I put, kinda put it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay.
I think the schools could be very different depending on what kind of school it is, so I would, I would tend, I would say special use for all of them.
And I, I might put preschool in that too, because it depends on the preschool, is it like a Montessori, or is it a district-wide preschool, or, you know? I don't know if there's other.
Yeah, good point, so preschool, we had one for five hundred up there, yeah, so, I like that, anybody, any, any objections with that? No, alright.
Okay, so they're all per special use approval?
Yes, that's the idea, so preschool.
And the daycare.
Schools, and the day can, daycare is, has one per five hundred right now.
Does make that one special use also?
If, if, I, I don't have the table in front of me, if it's a special use, that might be permitted in some zones, yeah.
Yeah, if it is, let's.
I, I think that's a permitted use in a couple zones.
So if it's not special use, then they'll.
Just leave it, I'll, I'll check, I'll tell you what, if it's a special use, I'll change it to special use, if it's not, I'll just leave it as it is, okay?
Alright. Uh, that, alright, if we're going too fast, Jim, let me.
Oh, no, it's, we're fine.
Alright, so, uh, new category for special use, so basically I passed the schools, now urgent care center, new category for special use, two per room. You know, I, I'm just relying on the, the book of, the standard book there, so that's, I don't have a reference except for what's basically industry standard, I guess we would say.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh.
What, what definition of a room in that case? Is it a patient room, is that a room, is it office or room?
Well, whatever we want, I mean, I just, I just, it's, normally it's like a patient room or an office, that's not a janitor's closet.
Sounds like you could have two patient rooms and six offices, and then all of a sudden you've got.
Yeah, could, yeah.
An immense amount of parking space required.
Well, then I'd make it special use.
Special use.
Yeah, make it special use.
They can make their, their own case for the parking requirements.
I think that makes sense too, 'cause if they have one room with a bunch of divider curtains, are those rooms, or are those one rooms?
I, I, yeah, some of this is just like counting few spaces in a church, and it's like, okay, how, how wide is the behind?
Right, yeah. Next one, equine boarding facility, one or two stalls, uh, way too high.
Yeah, again, we, you know, we changed the title of this, it used to be called stable, and the stable requirement was, was one per two stalls. That's, I, I mean, I don't know where that came from, it's like a boarding facility.
I mean, people are gonna come visit their animals, but all at one time, like we.
Probably not, I mean, that, to me, that just seemed kind of a high.
Would that also, that would also cover staff though.
True, but again, that's gonna be fluctuate, you're gonna have heavy staff involvement in the morning, and then maybe at feeding time for the evening, and then they're gone. So, you know, maybe two, three hours in the morning, two, three hours in the afternoon, and, yeah, again, it's gonna depend on the size of the facility.
I just question, 'cause I don't know what it is, really, so I don't, I don't know, but to me, my, first, my gut reaction was that was too high. If it's not, I don't know, I have no clue here.
I mean, if you, that's the thing, if you wanna do that to include, you know, the staff parking, then it's probably pretty fair, but if you wanna do stalls plus, like again, office quote unquote, um, then you can separate it out and maybe do one for three or four stalls, and then office or, or employees.
Is this, this is not a special use, is permitted use?
I think this is permitted.
Yeah, right.
Again, those are, if you're gonna, a stable's gonna have quite a bit of space, or land around it anyway, so putting up, you know, a slightly larger number, you know, would, would, probably, probably wouldn't be a problem, I mean, it's gonna be, you know, but, well, they don't want paved, so you want, you know, pervious surfaces, but not necessarily hard paved surface.
It depends on most facilities.
Right.
Some places will do a concrete slab for parking.
But I'm saying that with the way the ordinances are written, if it says that you have to have hard paved surfaces, I know we have some other, there's some other exceptions in there, but.
Alright, so.
Well, I can tell you one thing, ninety-five percent of your boarding facilities, there's not.
None.
Here's a stall for your car.
Painted line, yeah.
It's literally, everybody drive in and find a spot, so, I mean, this is kind of a guideline, it's not gonna be.
Parking the grass.
So, so if the guideline was one per, one spot per two stalls, and that's, we just use, leave it at that?
I mean, obviously, that'll just satisfy staff and whoever's gonna show up.
Exactly, okay.
You think it's way too high?
Again, I, I, I don't.
I have no reference on that, so.
Yeah, I don't either.
Okay, let's just leave it as one, one for two stalls, if that's, let's just leave it that for now, alright? Remember, this is not the final, final either, so we can always revisit that, okay? Uh, moving on to nine point four, V E, looks like, uh, some grammatical, uh, strikeouts there, following an R. Moving on to the next page, page twenty-two, which would be nine, five, B, dimensions of vehicle parking spaces. Uh, once again, looks like grammatical, any existing parking lots required a minimum, require a minimum parking stall width of only nine feet, so. Alright, uh. So it says any existing parking lots require a minimum stall width, oh, so if that's for new, okay, so if new, it's gonna be ten, if it's existing, it has to be nine feet. Is that what it says? Am I reading that right? Yeah, affected with the ordinance, stall width must be a minimum of ten feet for all parking angles except parallel. Any existing parking lots require a minimum of, of only nine feet, so would it, you say, would we say stall width must be a minimum for all new parked, or for all new? Or, I just wanna make sure, so it's saying existing is nine feet, and anything new is ten feet?
Correct.
Okay.
I guess this struck me from dealing with a lot of parking lots, a lot of the parking lots I see, everything's nine foot wide. If somebody wants, if a developer would like to make it wider, they certainly could, but I don't know, I mean, especially in the days of electric vehicles, and cars are starting to get smaller now because of gas prices, I mean, people still drive pickup trucks, but you can fit a pickup truck just fine in a nine-foot wide spot too, so. We're worried about parking, I'm not sure why we're going to ten foot, and I don't know what it was prior to this, I'm, I'm guessing based on them talking about prior with nine feet, that maybe it was nine feet, so I don't, I'd be okay with nine feet.
Safety of ten foot, you don't bang, the, the car doesn't hit the other car, and it opens completely.
Well.
If it came, if it came fashionable to go to ten feet, because the cost of all some of the big boxes did it.
Right.
Then it just built it down.
Well, if a parking use it, if a channel, if a parking use a channel for nine feet, we'd do that, so.
Well, that's what I was thinking, if we have a premium of parking spots, and we're, we're wasting one whole spot for every ten spots, but, and we don't have that much space to begin with, we're losing spots by changing it to ten.
How about we change the wording under R and B, as, as affected of the data, this ordinance stall width must be a minimum of nine feet for all parking. Except, except for parallel.
And that's where like, it, table K, you would probably need to go through, 'cause they got stall width at ten feet, and for ninety degree, and I know they have aisle widths of only twenty-two feet, which is kinda tight, uh, especially for ninety degree, um, I've seen twenty-four foot as a minimum, but for aisle width, not necessarily twenty-two.
Yeah.
Um, you know, you, I've seen them go down to twenty-two, when you have two-way, it's really tight, but, you know, sometimes we've done that, or you've done that in a parking garage-type scenario, where a lot of times spaces are smaller.
Okay.
Forty-four is.
It's kinda standard.
Okay.
It's standard, it really is.
So.
And this, that's in, that's not stall depth, that's?
That's in item K.
About the aisle width.
Yeah, for aisle.
Aisle width twenty-two, okay, so I'm, I'm good with twenty-two.
And then, another thing, I've seen a lot in, um, with the stall depth, for ninety degrees in, and you can also do it for some of the angles, it's a little more difficult, but when you have ninety degrees in, you could reduce that a little bit, if you have, um, like a two-foot overhang allowance, maybe you have a sidewalk that is, like six feet or seven feet next to the parking lot, so it allows for a two-foot overhang, or if you have a green space where, you know, the bumper can hang over two feet, sometimes you can shorten that parking stall width up from eighteen feet down to sixteen feet, because you have a two-foot overhang. And then you can kind of sometimes increase green space too, if you, you know, it, you're reducing the surface area of the parking lot a little bit, but you have that extra green space where you allow a two-foot overhang for your bumper.
There's not a lot of sidewalks though, today.
Sure, but, but then that's why I said you could do that with green space too, you know, as long as you allow that, but what that does prevent is, like when you put your landscaping around the parking lot, it has to be two to three feet off the back of curb, so if you're allowing for the two-foot overhang, you can't put a tree right next to the curb, because then you can't get your two-foot overhang.
Did, did we have a resolution on the nine feet versus ten feet?
I, I'm, I'm voting for nine feet, anybody else?
Nine.
Nine, okay, so we're gonna change it to nine.
Yep.
I think I gave a, a, basically, a, a, a sample of what B two should look, sound like, right?
Right, and then aisle width, was that twenty-two going to twenty-four?
Yes.
In both instances, the parallel and the.
I think that's a smart move.
Yeah.
Especially with long trucks and stuff like that, it's harder to turn in and stuff, so, alright.
It's easier to turn into a nine-foot stall, stall than a ten-foot stall, if you've got a white. Like, if you've got narrower aisles, then the width becomes more critical, so, okay.
Okay, very good, any other comments before we press on? Alright, uh, down, then, then, of course, there's a couple, there's a diagram on the next page, and then driveway design on page twenty-five, and then page twenty-six, we get to a little bit of red, the top of the page of nine, six, B, uh, closing eliminate any pre-existing driveway, okay? So basically joint, looks like you have a joint driveway, and then basically, if you're gonna join driveways, you wanna close and get rid of the pre-existing one. And joint driveways, that's my understanding. That was the intent, uh, Jim?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright, alright, so there we go. Uh, nine, seven, down to the, actually, nothing in nine, seven, so down at the bottom of that page, nine, eight, shared parking. Uh, I think multi-tenant retail contenders are not eligible for shared parking provision, I think you had a comment in the staff comment about that.
Yeah, I don't know why, I don't know why they wouldn't be, but.
So off-street, I'm just, so off-street parking spaces for separate uses may provide collectively, may be provided collectively if the aggregate number of spaces equals or exceeds the sum of the spaces required in table nine, three. Shared parking calculations, so if one, somebody only needs five spaces, someone needs ten, if as long as there's fifteen spaces, you could use it, you're seeing that?
Uh, well, that's part of, it's, I think that's part of it, but, but some of this looks at when their, um, peak hours are, and what type of uses.
Okay.
You know, just looking at that as well, but I, again, I don't know why they're excluding multi-tenant from here.
Yeah, 'cause it's a shared parking provision. I, if it's a provision offered to others, a shared parking provision?
Yeah.
So why, why wouldn't we offer it to multi-tenant retail?
Yeah, I don't think that.
So do you wanna strike that in red?
I, I would, I mean, again, maybe there's something I'm, you know, not aware of from a previous discussion, that, um, I just questioned it.
Yeah.
I can't think of a good reason why to exclude them.
Alright, um, let's strike, unless anybody has any comments or concerns, let's strike the, I think, shared parking calculation, and then the red, but.
Yeah, that's in the red.
Yeah, all that, okay. Alright, uh, next page, page twenty-seven, is app, the application of table nine, three.
One, one question I had when I read this is how would you go about calculating mixed use? Where you have tenant on the, you know, or residential on the, the second floor, and commercial or retail on the first floor? How would we, so that would be? I read like shared parking, I was like, oh, maybe that's where it would be, and I.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure, and, and maybe I missed it elsewhere, but I just didn't know.
Yeah, that table nine, three doesn't really, I mean, I guess you're, you're including both the residential use and the, and the commercial use. They, they're both listed in the table, I haven't really, you know, I, I played around with this table just to, you know, it's like, a, a bad, you know, accounting class I had once, kind of figured this out, and, and, so I got it, I said, now I understand, but I didn't run through every scenario, so I don't know if this really works or not, or no, I trust that there was some effort put into it. I didn't really change this parking, you can see, I didn't really change this chapter that much.
Where did this table come from?
This was in the ordinance that was approved in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so it's just the cameras.
So it would've been Camero's and the, and the committees and commissions that worked on it before.
So it would be questionable.
So I, I, if you look back at nine, eight, it says multi-tenant retail centers, or I talked, I think it's, uh, but at the very beginning, it says, for separate uses, to, I think to Chris's point, the use might be, there's a retail on the bottom, but a residential on the top, so, um.
It, which we have in the village.
Right, may, may be provided collectively, if the aggregate number of places provided some of the spaces, so. So I, if, I'm just trying to think real quickly through this, if you had res, like mid, like, go to the table nine, three, go residential, commercial, and you say a hundred percent and zero percent, so as long as, I guess, uh, those, a hundred percent would be covered for the residential, zero for the commercial, but they would have, you'd have, I guess, the, the question like seven A M. to six P M., that's where you were, were the most restrictive, you had, you had to use the most restrictive, I'm just trying to think through that scenario real quick. I would say residential, you have to use the most restrictive.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. Alright. I think the way it's worded says separate uses, so, separate uses, so. So let's just strike that on, on nine, three, and then press on?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was nine.
Maybe it would be better on nine point eight A, instead of separate uses, you say mixed uses, off-street parking spaces for mixed uses, maybe provided collectively?
Oh, I agree, that's probably.
Maybe is that what, does that?
Yeah, nine, A, right there, the first, right.
Yeah, off-street parking for mixed versus separate, strike separate, put in mixed. Okay, alright.
Then maybe that would coincide with the table, and maybe make more sense, I agree.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion, alright. Alright, storage of commercial vehicles, um, now, just, I haven't looked through this. So, but I'm, look at nine, nine, is storage of commercial vehicles, and then nine, ten, is storage of recreational vehicles.
Yes, I've gotten lots of issues here.
Yeah, so, so those are two addressed in two separate sections of it, so, alright, first of all, the, in, in the storage of commercial vehicles, and when we're saying storage, I guess that's my first question, so are we saying parking of a commercial vehicle? So, are we saying parking on the street, park, and actually, I understand that there's, they said, hey, you know, there's, uh, I think it was pretty well-defined for the recreational vehicles, side yard, midyard, there's some pretty good, had to be on a improved surface, and that was pretty well, uh, identified, uh, but storage of, so, storage is one word, I think of like parking something, because we're not gonna use it for six months, or something like that. I think that, going back to nine, nine, A, what, you had, we struck out the one-ton classification, was that the county, if I remember correctly, was that like?
I guess, that's probably.
I think it was the county, but, you know, just looking up what a Tesla weighs, it weighs.
Yeah.
Upwards of six thousand pounds.
F one fifty is five thousand, six thousand pounds.
Yeah, five thousand pounds, yeah, depending on, yeah, so I mean, there's.
But that's payload that they're referring to, when they say one-ton truck, that's the payload.
Yeah.
How much you can carry.
It doesn't, yeah, but it doesn't say that here, I mean, I, there's all types of weight, there's curb weight, there's empty weight, there's tar weight, there's, I, I mean, I don't, let's say, specify.
Right, here is what is the typical trucks that are out there, which mostly one-fifties, two-fifties, three-fifties, or add zero if it's a Dodge or whatever. And, um, that just again, half-ton, uh, three-quarters ton, a ton, carry up to a ton of weight in bed, plus pad, with pad, count the passengers. So it could be all sorts of leaks.
Yeah, so there's, that's a problem I have, so I'm thinking, like, why are we going down that road? So let's take a step back, what is the issue, and then how do we rectify the issue? What is the issue with storage of commercial vehicles, what are we trying to prevent?
People, this has been a, a controversy here as well, several calls, um, people just don't like their neighbor having a large pickup truck with ladders on it, a utility truck, certainly something like a tractor for a semi-trailer, uh, they will object. A landscaper with the, the big pickup truck, and then another trailer parked there, they just get, they just get upset at that.
But Jim, it's not storage, it's parking.
Well, I mean, that's, and then, then it becomes a difficult thing to park, I mean.
Okay, so.
Are you gonna go out?
I'm just trying to identify the problem first, alright?
Yeah, that, yeah.
So let's just identify the problem, the problem is, people are getting annoyed because there's more vehi- more business-type vehicles being parked in front of their houses, alright?
Commercial, park, not store.
Yes.
Park, yeah, park and store, I mean, both, both.
In, so, so that's, that's what we're trying to address here. So I think we need to have some type of ordinance that's going to address, or, if we can, or, but that's, alright?
In our subdivision, we have a commercial vehicle, you know, a comm ed truck, that when you pull into the subdivision, that's all you see. It's parked on the street every night, and it's an eyesore. If that's his work vehicle, then either leave it at work or park it in your driveway, it shouldn't be on the street. So during snow plowing season, you know, that gets adhered to, but for the rest of the year, it's just sitting out there, but it's parked because they use it every day. So to me, it's two parts. It's not storage, it's parking.
He's on call, and that's why his truck is there.
I don't care.
Well, but doesn't village ordinance not allow overnight parking unless you call in? So that sounds like an enforcement issue.
Right, but it's, but it's not storage, it's parked.
Okay, that's fine, I just, that's fine, so, what was your comment, Chris?
I just said if it's parked overnight, I think village ordinance, you're not allowed to park on the street overnight unless you call it in, I thought.
I'm unaware.
Unless he calls in overnight, every night.
Is it existing ordinance, Chris, is that what you mean?
I thought it was, yeah.
So just enforcement of that?
I don't believe, I don't believe so.
Okay, so what's the threshold for storage? Two nights, three nights, four nights?
I think, Jim, we have to address the parking and keep storage out of it, because these are vehicles that are moved.
That's a backup, now, big picture, is parking part of the zoning ordinance? Are we trying to be enforcing parking on the zoning ordinance?
Right, that's why I don't think this belongs here, it should be enforcement or nuisance ordinance that's being violated, not zoning. I mean, I don't understand why this is here in.
Traditionally, cities and villages try to regulate commercial activities not being in residential neighborhoods. Because someone has a nice residential house, they expect that they have a Lincoln Continental, not a F-three-fifty with stuff hanging on it.
Totally agree, but.
That's why.
That's, that's not what this is saying. The way this is written, I don't understand the problem is, this doesn't seem to correlate to the problem you're describing.
I didn't write it, and I don't even care.
Yeah.
To a certain extent, sorry, whether we're restricting commercial vehicles, I mean, we have to think for the village, why, too? Because you have farms that may have commercial vehicles, and not that a farmer's neighbor's probably gonna call and complain, but technically, if you start putting some of this in there, they're not allowed to park their vehicles out there either. So I think some of this should be maybe relegated to more of an HOA type of.
We have very few subdivisions that have a HOA, Chris. There's a lot of, pardon me?
Yeah, that are active.
Correct. We've got a problem in our subdivision, the Hastings', that's exactly this thing about commercial vehicles. And we called the police, and they've come out, we've talked, I think, you know, somebody's even called you, Jim, because the police didn't respond or something, and they said, well, it's code enforcement, it's not a policing issue, and they were told, yes, it is a policing issue, and they're supposed to be out there. So, I mean, yes, commercial vehicles, parking in residential zone districts should be enforced under the nuisance ordinance. And where it's called out, I don't care, but I don't know why it belongs in the parking ordinance.
Or zoning.
Parking zoning.
Zoning ordinance. Yeah.
I mean, I'm looking at the zoning ordinance that was adopted in twenty-twenty-three, and then the prior zoning ordinance, and, I mean, there was a ton limitation, it was three-quarter ton in the two thousand and seven zoning ordinance that the village adopted from Kane County. That was up to a ton in twenty-twenty-three. I mean, it does address parking and overnight storage of pickup trucks that is allowed in residential districts, so the prior ordinance relies, or the current ordinance, relies on the one-ton limitation. So technically, comm ed truck unlikely to be allowed if it's a larger in size truck. But a pickup truck, you know, carpenter with ladders and an F-one-fifty, that's allowed.
Yeah.
And that was, that was maintained in the twenty-twenty-three code.
But overnight storage is overnight parking. We're gonna have to get the terminology of what we're defining as storage.
It does say storage, though, it does say storage and overnight parking for pickup trucks, anything under one ton, so.
But the term, it makes no sense to call one overnight store. There has to be a time element associated with it.
Okay, I, we can, I think, parse that a little bit later, I think we still have to get the bigger question, it's like, does this really belong in here, or is there a better vehicle to address the fact that we have undesirable, or potentially undesirable vehicles parked in residential areas or whatever? So is this, is this the avenue that, or is there already an avenue in the village code which would allow that to be, like, Mr. Colfax said, enforced under code?
It could still be enforced under the zoning ordinance, it would be enforced the same way.
Well, by the zoning officer? Alright, okay, and then versus if it's in the village code, it goes to the police?
Really, no, if it's in, if it's in the village code, that still could be enforced by the zoning officer, just to determine, it depends on what the internal administrative, you know, delegation of duties is here in village hall. The only difference is if it's in the village code versus the zoning code, or zoning ordinance, it's a little easier to modify down the road, you don't have to come back to public hearing, village board can make that change, don't have public notice or anything like that.
The problem is exactly that, because the, they were told that the zoning officer had to enforce the parking, and then the truck was gone before the zoning officer came in at ten in the morning, but yet the trucks are parking between ten in the night and, you know, seven or eight in the morning. And this is, you know, an ugly, big, a D-rated truck, so it was a box truck. And, I mean, you gotta have police enforcement on this, they should be able to go out and write a ticket immediately, not the zoning officer. I mean, it's part of the vehicle code.
That's not the code's issue, that's an internal enforcement of policy.
But it's a matter of where it's called out in the, in the village, whether it's zoning or, you know, nuisance ordinance, one can be enforced by the police, the other seems to be, you know, has to be the, what do you call it, code enforcement.
But that's, that's not a, the police can enforce the zoning code, write tickets on the zoning code, that's done a lot of places.
Well, apparently somebody didn't know that.
Well, no, it's the practice of the police department to not be delegated to do this work here. But in other communities, they write them all the time. They're writing a lot more than a zoning officer would for the very reason you outlined.
Alright, so what I'm saying here is, no matter what we write in here, that it gives the tools to be done, but whether it gets done or not is a whole nother picture.
Yeah.
You know, so we could put one-ton, two-ton, you know, we could put whatever we wanna put in there, but if no one's gonna go out and enforce it, then it, is it what to work?
Well, if a citizen complaint comes in, in this scenario, I think it should be enforced by the police, not the zoning officer. Because i-if it's against the village code, then it's against the village code, and they should be writing a ticket. But you don't wanna have, and this isn't directed at you, Jim, you don't wanna have an employee of the village going out to a residence and having to, in essence, write a ticket for a violation. The police do it all the time, so our, our police department writes tickets anytime you drive down Silver Glen Road. I mean, they're there, sitting there, waiting for some of the speed, so they're, they're out. And Jim, we have the same problem in our subdivision, so I think there's a communication part, too. Who should we be calling, and then how do we communicate between the village and the police department that it's a nuisance, it's an ordinance, and we need to enforce it?
Okay.
They're sworn in, they're sworn in to enforce the code, too, not just state law.
Well, I mean, it could be a communication, it should, too.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that, what I'm kinda seeing from this whole discussion, and I don't wanna spend a whole lot more time on it, but I would like to come to some type of fruition. Storage versus parking, I could see storage being addressed in here, I could see parking being addressed in the village code. Okay, that would be, that would be my suggestion, and I think that would be something that the board could take up and review, and say that's what they want to do or not.
Yeah.
Alright?
And remember, all this was adopted mostly from the Kane County code, so something that's been standing for years and in use apparently, and then what, mystery committees and all the studies and all, were just tweaking to try to, okay. You know, a lot of people now have one-ton pickup trucks versus just three-quarters-ton, since they're recreational or something like that, even, and obviously work, so, again, it's, you know, and Jim has his experience with things like that, so it's not like, you know, this stuff would just create a, a new out of the board.
Right, right.
Yeah, my comment would be not by weight designation, but by license designation. If it's an A or a B, it's allowed, if it's C or, C or above, it's not allowed, because you can get duly pickups with B plates, C plates, or D plates, depending upon what they're rated and for towing, and what they are carrying. So I would say, I would suggest going by license designation, cuz it's very easy to see and enforce.
It's much easier to enforce that.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a good suggestion.
And a lot of towns and cities went to C and D plates, or just say D plates, depends on.
Right, D is definitely outs, out, C is.
Depends on the community.
Yeah.
Lake Forest, Lake Forest would say C is a no-go, and a more blue-collar place would say C is good.
But again, when we get into RVs, it'll come back, because you can have a tow vehicle, which is a C plate, towing your trailer or your RV, which is allowed to be parked on your property, but that's.
Let's just focus on this one right now, so, any other comments?
So do you wanna outlaw, do you wanna switch it to C and D instead of a.
I would say, right, my suggestion is do it by license designation, we can determine where the breakpoint is later, but.
So license designation?
Yeah, I'm just kinda recall, cuz we did that in another community, and it seemed like that was still fraught with some issues, and I can't remember exactly what it was. I guess the one question is, if I have a vehicle that should have a D plate, I think this is what people are doing, do I have to get a D plate, or can I somehow circumvent and get a vanity plate, or some other specialty plate, and I don't have a D plate? I think that was the issue.
Some of that, I think depends on the police officer.
Yeah.
Because technically, the plate is associated with, at least the way I understood it from several officers, the plate that you have in your vehicle isn't necessarily what you could carry, it's what you're carrying. So if you're carrying ten thousand pounds, you need a plate that is rated for that. So, you know, so like a pickup truck, even though it can carry, you technically, according to some police officers, you could get away with your standard passenger vehicle plate on a pickup truck, as long as you're not carrying weight. But then there's other police officers who will just randomly pull you over and say, that's a pickup truck, you need a B plate.
I think that was the issue, the people that weren't getting the plates that category was supposed to. I mean, to me, it seems like the simplest way, but I guess that's what I started at the beginning. I've tried this probably like fifteen different ways, and just been frustrated every single way.
I think Jim's suggestion is a good suggestion to be.
The reality is, the bureaucracy can always be game.
Yeah.
Okay, so, just, just.
Yeah, if you want, yeah, if you wanna try that.
To put it all in a bow, to put it all in the bow. Storage of vehicles within the code, within the zoning, within the zoning. Parking, like overnight parking and stuff, would be suggested to be put in the village code, where you could have more twenty-four enforcement. And that we, the threshold would be, how about D plates, suppose it's just certain D plates? But they, they would, Jim was saying, the criteria would be the licensed plate.
Yeah.
And we'll start with D, we'll start with D.
As and Bs are permitted.
Okay, A and B permitted, C and D not.
C and D not.
Okay, we'll start with that, and we can always come back and revisit this again.
Let me get to RVs.
Well, yeah, and I guess that was what I was thinking, is like with RVs or horse trailers or things like that, I don't know offhand what plate you need for towing a larger horse trailer, but if somebody's towing a larger horse trailer with their duly, but it's a daily driver, maybe they need a C plate, and then all of a sudden they find themselves not being able to park their pickup truck in their driveway.
Their truck in their driveway, yes.
Right, just because of that, that's all I'm.
Well, is this referring to public parking or driveway?
No, in your driveway at your home.
It's your private revenue.
Or on the side of your house, on the grass, or wherever you find your car.
D is a lot easier on the enforcement.
Yeah.
Cuz that is.
That's big.
Like for not, when I saw it, I knew it was.
It's big.
Okay.
Take some of the judgment.
Alright, so that's a starting spot for us?
So, does Jim have enough concept now to rewrite, rewrite this nine-nine?
I'll have to take a look at the C and D threshold.
I don't think we wanna catch up with people that have horses or have some of that. So D is safer in this community.
No, no, D, D is ten thousand pounds.
No, D is out.
Okay, D is out, yes, yes.
That's where we can say it's out.
But on the flip side, though, then if we're trying to, with this, prevent the, you know, service van repair or vehicle that's brought home every night from parking in the driveway, a D plate won't stop that.
No, that's commercial, and commercial is outlawed, period.
Aware.
Is it, it doesn't say that here, though?
That's where I'm, that's where I thought we were getting at, is that commercial, parking of commercial vehicles, regardless of size or weight, should be prohibited.
I don't remember reading that, and that was what you're trying to suggest.
Yeah, that's why I asked that, cuz I didn't, I didn't see that.
Yeah.
It doesn't say that.
I mean, if it, I.
No.
Or the storage or keeping of commercial equipment and supplies is prohibited.
This says there are, currently, it says there are permitted up to one ton.
Yeah.
Is what the code currently says, and then Jim identified that maybe one ton is too low.
And Jerry said one ton's referring to something else, I think it's the curb weight.
Right.
He's saying it's low, it's load.
If they say, yeah, then, well, then specify it, that might be correct.
I guess, I'm just thinking if we just say a D plate, that means anything D or, or a C or a B or a, it doesn't matter what it is, they can park it in the driveway.
A, B, or C.
A, B, or C, and it could have, you know, rotor rudder, it could have any business thing on there. Joe's Plumbing, a trail, you know, potentially, you know, I don't know, I'm just.
So these permitted commercial vehicles may include the logo of the commercial.
Commercial businesses painted on and applied to the vehicle, yeah.
So I guess I'm just asking, what are we trying to outlaw? That's why I asked that, based on the simple.
What are we trying to do here? Are we trying to prevent trucks and, and, you know, a truck with a twenty-foot landscape, you know, trailer behind it on the, in the residential area parked every night? That seems to me what we're trying to prevent, or that's just what this wording is trying to prevent.
Yeah, that's what gets people angry, and it's the overnight parking that gets them angry as well, so.
But by the same token, I feel like you're basically telling your neighbor they can't bring their livelihood home with them at all.
Exactly, that's why this, yeah. That's why this, yeah. Tell the contractor he can't park his pickup.
I think just to look at the prior ordinance, the two thousand and seven ordinance that had a three-quarter ton restriction, twenty-twenty-three has a one, in excess of one ton. So an F-three-fifty is a one-ton truck, okay, so that would be allowed, it's a pretty big truck for, for most contractors, too.
Yeah.
And something larger than that, like an F-four-fifty with the large boxes on the back, I mean, that, that, commercial truck. I mean, that's when, in most people's minds, that's considered a, would be considered a commercial truck. That doesn't mean that somebody with an F-three-fifty with logos and ladders would be prohibited from parking that on their driveway, and I think that could potentially have been the intent of the change, increasing to one ton. Now, most of your box trucks are going to be, probably going to be in excess of one ton. The trailers, for instance, that, I believe that would probably be considered, could be considered commercial equipment. So that wouldn't be allowed as is currently.
Yeah, I don't think, it's a bad ordinance, the way it's written. They did do a lot of this work to try to get to.
So.
You have commercial equipment and supplies, so if you have, if you have a trailer, an open trailer full of supplies, technically, this current ordinance could potentially be, you could be in violation of it.
Okay.
So if we went, with a clear understanding of a one-ton.
In excess.
Classification.
Right.
It says, yeah, vehicles in excess of one ton, I don't know if that's one-ton payload, or. It says, yeah, vehicles in excess of one ton, I don't know if that's one-ton payload, or.
As Jerry said, yeah.
Yeah, so. So maybe add that, you could, if you go back to what we had, instead of put one-ton truck, and there's that payload, uh, classification, you could add that back into it, and then go back to that. Doesn't seem like there's a, there's a silver bullet to solve the problem, you know, so I think there's gonna be some.
Just get along with your neighbors.
Yeah, right, uh.
Yeah, cause we don't go looking for it unless it may be complex, but honestly, folks.
The last thing I did like, Carmen, did you say something about commercial, not vehicles, but commercial equipment?
Uh, A, nine-nine A says, uh, this, I'm looking at the right one here.
Or, or the keeping of commercial equipment and supplies is prohibited on lots in residential areas. All right.
Is that something where we would probably be better off somewhat identifying what commercial equipment could be? Because you could have a, I mean, I, I understand if you have a enclosed trailer that has, you know, Jim's landscaping service or Bob's plumbing service, that's one thing, but if it's just a enclosed trailer that's parked there, nobody knows what's in it, you know, so you, so there's way, I mean, I don't know.
It, equipment, I mean, I don't think you would classify a trailer as equip. I think the equipment are, is the.
Stuff that goes in the trailer.
Exactly.
But if, I'm just saying, though, if you have an unlabeled trailer, and he has his equipment in an unlabeled trailer.
All right.
Is it allowed or not, you know?
All right.
It's an interesting.
I'm, I'm about ready to postpone this. Okay, so, uh, but, and I think we're, I'm gonna spend more than three more minutes on this, uh, because we'll just have to think about it and come back to it, but.
Yeah.
I think we've kinda done a full circle, sounds like we've done a full circle and exercise on this one. And I'm seeing that if we go, we go back with kind of the original intent of the language there, except adding, reinstating the one-ton truck payload classification, all right? Uh, and it does say commercial equipment, would we want to add also that class D is prohibited, or something? A class D license would be prohibited, or you could add that in as well, uh, but I guess that would be greater than one-ton payload anyway, right?
That's ten thou, class D is ten thousand pounds and above.
So what, a tractor tra, the, the truck, a tractor trailer, not the trailer?
Just the truck.
Yeah.
A, a duly pickup, you know, F four fifty is ten thousand pounds, can't be ten thousand pound rating. So it could require a D plate, if it's got a hitch on the back, on a bump, either back bumper hitch or a trailer.
My question was whether to include it or not, if we just go back to the one-ton payload, do we include that as well or not, what's your thought? Do you want both of those in, or just stay with the one-ton payload? Just try to accommodate, if that's what you think, but if we have the one-ton payload, would that take care of the D classification? Nothing in excess of one ton.
But there's, but there's a middle ground in there that apply, that is necessary for RVs that we haven't gotten to yet. That's what I'm saying, there's somehow.
Okay.
Keep that as a separate subject.
Yeah, we'll take that as a separate, let's just go back.
One ton doesn't seem to be a priority.
Add the word payload.
Yeah.
And we're moving on, all right?
Okay, okay.
We can come back, uh, and maybe we'll marinate on that a little while, and just think about what's going on, okay? Storage of recreational vehicles. Uh, living cor, okay, uh, nine-ten B, let's see, no recreational vehicle, the sleeping, okay, so basically you change from fourteen to five consecutive days. So you don't want people with their recreational vehicles out there, and, uh, not hooked up to any public utilities, but you could be hooked up to a residence, okay? Somebody comes over, okay, I don't, at five, uh.
I, I had exactly this experience where my cousins came in with their trailer and wanted to park for, you know, two weeks while they were here.
And you only wanted them here one week?
I wanted them here for a month, but, uh, it wasn't a problem, but, you know, the, I mean, fourteen days, you know, was probably more appropriate than five, five consecutive days. And then the, the statement here about electricity, you know, to maintain battery life, that I, I believe should be taken out and maybe a reference to, uh, no more than a twenty amp service connection to the residence. You know, we stated something like that. I mean, you got also the water and sewer and septic hookups, and, you know, that I think is what your intent here is that you don't want them, you don't want a vehicle that's gonna be semi-permanently in place.
And that's what, that's what, that's what the five days does. I would just say recreational vehicles may be connected to electricity at the residence, period.
Yeah.
All right?
Okay.
And realistically, the otherwise should not be hooked up to any public utilities, if you're on well-inseptic, you're not hooked up to public utilities, and you're hooked up to the house anyway, so.
There are some with public, yeah, public utilities. All right, so, okay with five days, and then taking a second question, that recreational vehicles may be connected to electricity at the residence, period. Strike in order to maintain the battery life of the vehicle.
Now, the concept with the connection to electricity was we didn't want people living in it.
Right. But.
I would say seven days, just cause it's a Saturday through a Sunday, it's just a week, I mean, five days, it's like.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You gotta get out of here on Thursday, cause you know, you were here Saturday, I mean, I, I don't know.
Okay.
You go for it.
Weekend to weekend.
Why was fourteen instructive again?
I just thought that was too long, so I threw a five, I don't care, I, that's just.
Do we get many complaints? Does the village get many complaints?
Uh, I, elsewhere I've had people living in these, these vehicles, you know. Fourteen just seemed kind of long, you know, and maybe it isn't, I, again, I don't care, I'm just.
I don't know, but seven days, let's put in seven days.
Seven days.
They're probably responding to just concern about sensitivity with the parking owners.
They still want people parking out there all summer.
Two weeks on the one hand, okay, cause there's a lot of people that have them, or have, I mean, I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, keep fourteen days, but, to me, it just seems.
All right, moving on.
Seven days?
Seven days.
Seven days.
Like, like an Airbnb rental.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Uh, yeah, and I think you've got one here about storage, yeah, you want operable condition, you don't want just like.
Right, yeah, yeah, had flat tires and.
Yeah, Peter, Peter's stuff, okay.
Locks and that kind of stuff, that and that stuff.
All right, I like it, done? Done with nine? I think that's the end of nine, right?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, that was, uh, it took more time than I thought, but that's all right, we got, we got through it, all right.
My only comment here would be, is that, as you were talking before about tow vehicles, in that, because of the size of RVs, you know, a pickup truck towing an RV should be allowed to be parked wherever the, the, the RV could be parked. And there's where you'll run into the, the mid-range, mid-size pickups, mid to large-size pickups, because you've got this huge RV, which is allowed by our code now to be parked or could be stored if it's, you know, meets the requirements for storage. But he should be able to park his pickup truck, tow vehicle, it's called tow vehicle, at the same site. And that's where you run into the, the B and C ratings.
Yeah.
Well, wouldn't that be at the discretion of the coding, the discretion of the zoning officer or zoning administrator?
Not the way it's written.
Yeah, I mean, that's why my point is, could you make it, the discretion? All right, so the last question was, so your, your concern is that.
The tow vehicles should also be able to be parked wherever the RV can be parked.
Okay, so, and that regardless of the capacity of the truck, then?
Right.
Okay. Uh, don't know how you're gonna, how you're gonna include that.
Or maybe the, maybe the tow vehicle has to fall within the same, well, no, you, you wouldn't wanna park, your tow vehicle could be parked as your everyday drive.
Right.
So it wouldn't necessarily have to be behind a fence, or, you know, side yard, or off the side, it could be in front of your garage.
RV or, your RV in your driveway, and you.
For your car in front, so.
All right, let's, let's press, I.
It's messy.
Yes, um, but I think that's gonna be some discretion on the zoning officer on that one. All right, item six, open space zoning. All right, item six, open space zoning. So, let's see, here we go. All right, so, uh, we've got a couple of maps, ones for north of sixty-four, ones to south of sixty-four, and we, the last time we had this discussion, it was, I was trying to identify which parcels were owned by who, and making sure that all the parcels were properly identified, so that they would be listed as open space. Uh, we had different, different discussions about layers of open space types, I think I'd like to keep it simple, so one, classification of open space, which would include, as, as Mr. Gobarski wanted, like township open space versus forest preserve open space, uh, versus, it might be, uh, other open space, uh, such as homeowners or, uh, I understand there's different types of open space, cause there's farmland preservation, and there's, uh, stuff. But I think if we try to have an overlying open space, uh, this is my first go-around, open space category, you can have subcategories if we need to, or delineate, uh, covenants or something else like that. And I think that's what Kathleen is gonna be helping us with, is to get into that and, and figure that out, because the first thing, we have to identify the parcels, make sure that all the parcels are, that there's no missing parcels of open space, uh, and that they're all correct. And then once we can have that, then we can delineate which ones, all right? So, uh, having said that, uh, I, Jim, I don't know if there's a whole bunch we can do until we have that information, right? If, I, I can't tell you which is, what's missing from this zoning, and I could look at it, just to see if I pick out something, I, no, I could, I can't.
Well, I, I can identify the township open space properties and the forest preserve properties.
Okay.
What I can't identify is what are shown in some of the subdivisions as nature preserves. So it's not under the county, it's not under the village, it's not under the township. Some subdivisions have areas that are called nature preserves.
Okay.
So I think that, you know, calling these out by those names is critically important, um, just for identification purposes. The forest preserve property shouldn't be called open space, it should be called forest preserve. Township owned open space because of the Illinois state statutes that it was purchased under, is the Township Open Space Act. That makes sense to call it Canton Township Open Space. So I'm, I'm not aware if the village has any properties that are outside of the township, or the county, or the state, or these homeowners associations, um, so some, uh, sometimes we use the wrong terminology, and I think that's important, that we just get that terminology correctly, the identifiers.
All right, so for, for a starting spot, not an ending spot, I'm just gonna talk about open space, just open space in general, okay? Which will include many types of open space.
Yep.
And whether we come to that conclusion that we call it all, or we separate it, that's fine, but let's just put that to the side right now. Point noted, uh, but we wanna understand, and I guess you make a good point, I don't know about the nature, you know, like the different subdivisions that have nature or, or open space, for lack of a better term, set aside. Um, and I think we alluded to earlier, I don't know what the village can do with any of that, especially if it's in a PUD, we have no, we have no control or influence, I believe, or, I don't think our codes would address that, cause I think they're.
Well, I think it is by, when it was platted, it, it must remain.
Go ahead, okay.
It's controlled in that way, the platted subdivision, it is.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna turn your mic on.
I'm sorry.
It is absolutely controlled to be, stay in that regard, to be open.
Okay.
So that isn't, I don't think gonna be too problematic. I think our map that we've been handed from, they didn't finish in twenty twenty-two, pretty much identified all those, but it didn't get into what Jerry said, that there's some of these parcels that have covenants on them.
Okay.
They didn't get to that level of gran, granular.
Detail.
Detail, they had the big Camden and Forest Preserve and.
Yeah, tend to be those, uh, the very thing you're talking about, it's all, oh, nature preserve in the middle of the development, I don't know what the covenant was. And part of it, too, is the county was saying, okay, this land has to be set aside, because they're thinking not just, oh, it's natural, it's like water issues, flood control, all that kind of.
Right.
So, so that was why they allowed the developer to do it, was because they were setting aside this land that had to protect, help protect the subdivision itself from itself.
Right.
Yeah, we had the private open space issue with Fox and all, so we, the point is, yeah, it's restricted by that, by density, it's restricted by something. So identifying is not a bad idea.
Yeah.
And it's critical, because there's people that think that right out by Belmorel, that there's two ways they cut the grass over there. The one is, it could put a commercial building on it, but everybody goes, that's open space. No, it's been open for a number of years, it is not.
Designated.
Designated open space, but since it's.
It was part of the covenants or the, the PUD that, you know, that was supposed to be kept for whatever purposes, whether it was, I think it's water potential, or anything besides the aesthetics of coming into town and seeing, you know, a little.
But the one right by the commercial, that little stretch there could be a commercial property, we've looked at that, and it contradicts stories that people have told me, oh, no, that's protected open space. Well, that, just, you know, recent events that have happened in our area make this even more important than when we started the discussions, to clearly identify and delineate the ownership and the, uh, identifiers of the properties.
Okay.
And it becomes, it, it was, uh, before, when we discussed it, it was, you know, this is a good idea. Today, I'm saying it, it's an absolute must, that we get into the depth and detail of what we have here.
All right.
And whether you can put the open space, and another thing, and we talked about, you know, protected properties or dedicated properties, unless it doesn't imply whether it has to do with land or historic buildings or whatever, it's just a, and that way, in your map, your map is important to potential developers, so they can see, oh, this is not just vacant land, or this is not a house that can be torn down, you know.
Yep.
And then we get to what Joe brought up at the very beginning of the village telling Forest Preserver Camden what they could have, couldn't do, or need a permit for on that, I think you gotta look at that a little closer, too, because there's like special uses on the open space. Are we comfortable with all the definitions that we've inherited in twenty twenty-two on these different parcels of, and do we wanna modify any of that? So your reference to the PUD, so it makes absolutely no sense to me, that the PUD would be on, that's absolute, but that we would have some influence over the Forest Preserve or township. Subdivision built by a builder with a, a PUD has more rights in the township or Forest Preserve for zoning or the use on that property. And I just wanna, I, I want the village to be careful when we talk about this, because the issues that we're faced with, we don't wanna get in a situation where we make things worse, uh, than they're, uh, heading towards. And, you know, the Township Open Space Act is, is very specific, we're one of five townships in Camden that follows that. We're the largest landowner in the state under the Open Space Act, uh, we don't wanna lose our open space, we want it to continue to grow. And whether it's the village, this village, or a different village or city, having influence over that is not a tenable situation.
Well, I, I know what you mean by influence, but I, you know, the idea of zoning, cause I have to go back to zoning, is that we wanna protect it. So we wanna protect it, and wanna protect what's around it, we don't want a chemical plant next to it, you know, and so the, the idea is to be able to protect that area.
And preserve.
Exactly, exactly, so if it's zoned as open space, or farmland preservation, or township open space, or whatever, subcategory of that, it's owned, we wanna protect that, and the village has the ability to say, no, you're not gonna build condos on open space, you know, so that's, that's how you protect it. Just the same way, is that, let's just say that the, the Forest Preserve decides, I'm gonna sell, I'm gonna sell a parcel of my land to a developer and put condos on it, so that I can take the money and then redevelop all my other properties. So they probably would never, ever do that, you know, but, but that would be a.
No, there's already precedent for it, and other forest preserves, I don't, even maybe some of our own, where they have, like, the land bought by for tax money for forest preserve and preservation, they then wound up doing some sort of deal where
Swap.
access or swap, that they could cross property to put in a sewage system that they couldn't have done otherwise. All sorts of different things that, you know, so, I mean.
So the village is there to protect that.
Yes, it has an element of it.
So it's a, it's a two-way street, you know, so, uh.
Well, and I think we should address what is in some of your concerns earlier, Joe, is that you've got historic buildings.
is that you've got historic buildings, and the village doesn't really take a strong point of view to preserve those, and say you can't take them down or modify them, and you probably wanna keep it that way. And there's active and passive recreation. On farming fields, you can go through the zoning and get a solar field. Do you wanna let open space have solar fields? But right now, it's not really addressed, or it's against, it says it can't be done, but do we wanna get that granular on telling the open space township what they can and can't do?
Well, my, my point though, was if we can't tell a, a subdivision what to do based on the PUD, we can't tell the township what to do on their open space property.
No, there's the use table that does do something.
Yes, a PUD, a PUD is, is controlled by the village in the first place.
Yep.
Yeah.
The PUDs I'm referring to were in place before the village was formed. But then village codes now take precedence over changes to that PUD.
It might have been done with the county before, but it's in the village.
I think what Joe's basically saying, if I understand correctly, is that you don't want PD, PUD to have more rights than the forest preserve or the open space does.
What right would they have, what right would they have that the forest preserve wouldn't have?
But look at the use table, are you comfortable with that, is what I'm trying to get you to. Because I think preserve, protect were good, but is there anything objectionable that they give in 2022, 23, on that use table?
I'm, you're saying they have more rights, I'm just trying to figure out, what, what rights does a homeowner association have over, which is in the PUD, it says that has to be preserved, versus the township's property or the county property?
Typically, a PUD is a variance from the code for development.
Right, so you've got different densities.
So, you're not necessarily giving them different rights, you're just saying, hey, the density needs to be X, and a developer will come through and say, well, I don't wanna quite make it X, I wanna make it Y. And so, then that's a, a variance, so to speak, or one of the terms of the PUD. So, maybe he may, you know, the village zoning ordinance may say, right away, for all roads has to be 60 feet. He may come in and say, well, I wanna save, you know, these wetlands over here, and I wanna do this, and so I'm gonna squeeze the right of way down to 50 feet, but I'll give you a five-foot easement in the front yards. That is a, a, a variance from the zoning code, it's not, that's what a PUD is. And then when the village negotiates that and/or approves a PUD, it's just approval of several variances from the code at one time.
At one time, but it can't be totally divorced from the underlying...
Correct. It's just certain items, yeah. And the zoning stays...
I accept the way you...
You could have the zoning code that said 33 feet is the max, and then put in a 50-foot building as a PUD variance, because that could be objectionable beyond the scope. So, they do, it, it does exactly what Chris said, of...
Well, there's, there's a stigma on PUDs here from, from what the counties do, right? The county used to do questionable things under PUD, but I think that's the, the underlying distrust of it as a three-letter acronym, whereas Chris is right, that we, it is a set, it is a set, agreed upon, negotiated upon, variances that apply just to the land, but then they're, they're locked in place, can't change them without going through a change of PUD. So, I mean, in that way, Joe, there's more on some things. Um, but to mark your point too, if we're talking about what does open space want us not to tread upon, and what does open space want us to protect, so I'm gonna get that identified in the table.
Yeah, I think we should look at that use table, is it accurate what they did in 2022? I, I haven't heard much complaint to it, but this is where you would wanna touch it.
Which table are you referring to?
The, the use table?
Is this the one on, is his notes on page five?
Just the use...
There's a portion on the F5.
The use matrix, just from the, uh, table seven one from the...
Yeah, that was chapter seven, that big, that big one we went through.
Oh, that one.
I think it's, I think it's chapter five now, it's five.
It may have moved now or...
That one, okay.
Yeah, you already did it, and I think we're happy with that, but...
What do you...
We'll have to re-review it.
Yeah.
Because some things may have changed.
Put a key eye on that, with your, you know, with your concerns. But, yeah, I, I'm unaware of any rights. Like, you, you said they have more rights, I'm unaware of any rights, but I'm willing to learn, uh, but I, I don't think there's any different rights. Uh, so, okay, so, we're trying to identify the properties, and then make sure they're accurate, and that they're identified, and then with Kathleen's help, we're gonna get more granular about covenants and those types of things, but also identify land that we want to protect, okay? Which I will just call collectively open space for right now, okay? Jim, just go back.
We, we already said that we're trying to protect against development, and that we're referring to large parcels that could be developed. So, within, uh, an HOA or within a subdivision, does it even apply?
There's not much...
There's not that much there that could be...
Developed.
Reconstrued to be developed into something other than what it already is. So, why are we even talking about looking at covenants and all these others, you know, mechanisms
Not within a PUD subdivision as much, but there are homes scattered throughout, and parts, smaller parcels, five acres, 20 acres, that may have covenants that they have placed over the years.
Over property.
Over property, so that it stays woods.
Okay.
And it stays...
So, we were trying to identify those.
Okay.
So, this has been, this has been set aside for X preservation, whether it's a nature preserve or...
So, it's like, one, it's more than one acre sites?
We're not looking inside the PUDs that are in administration, we're really looking at the points that Jerry pointed out that do exist, that...
Okay, thank you, that, that makes more sense now.
Because you have to remember, cov- covenants do not run with the land, is the problem, they're not, uh, like with running, like a conservation easement has to run with the land, it's in the deed and all that kind of thing.
Right.
Whereas covenants, a homeowners association, uh, some, usually they have a timeframe that they'll say, well, in 35 years, if they want to change something, the homeowners at that time can get together and change the covenants. So, on whatever it is, whether it's happening, you know, are these parked in your yard or not?
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm trying to stay quiet, you know, my opioid medication is running off. Sorry for kind of a testy exchange, it's, it's in pain, but, um, I was just gonna say one thing. I mean, I, I, this to me should be a very simple exercise, and it seems like we, we continue to go sideways. And there's just a couple of comments here, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna try and say a few things and then shut up. Insofar as a property has a covenant or easement on it, and that is, that property is undeveloped, and is large enough to be threatened with development, then we should consider zoning that open space. If there is a property that's already been developed with a homeowner, that's gonna be zone residential, and the protection that's gonna come to that property is gonna be the minimum lot size, so we ensure that that lot can't be subdivided. As far as cutting down trees, we don't have a tree preservation ordinance, that's not gonna stop anyone from burning a prairie or cutting trees down, or whatever. So, we're looking, or we're just, we should be confining ourselves to, to relatively large, as I said in the start, relatively large parcels that have the potential to be, that are undeveloped and have the potential to be redeveloped. That there's already some development on it, like someone's home, or whatever, then I'm not certain that's gonna be zoned open space. And the protection to, to that would be, it can't be further subdivided. The other covenant or easement could offer an additional layer of protection. When we get into the PUDs, there are large areas over in Fox Mill, if we wanna take these large swaths where they got the streams flowing through, and it's been done for stormwater management, or part of open space, and, you know, recreation maybe, if we wanna take those and zone those open space, that's fine. But if there's a little sliver that's a quarter of an acre, no one's ever gonna redevelop that. And I wouldn't get all wound up wrapped around the axle on trying to identify that. I mean, it's just something you go through and you take a look at the lot size and you're, and we're done. The fact that it has a easement or a does, an easement, that's, that's irrelevant to me. Take a look at a map, I should be able to take a look at the map of the town, and I, I wish I had done this, and just mark off, yeah, that's potential open space. So, over in Fox Mill, there's a lot of things I would mark off if we wanted to zone as open space, and have additional protection above and beyond that annexation agreement, and the PUD agreement, annexation agreement, that's a contract, I think it expires after 20 years, so probably, we're probably beyond that, but, yeah. So, yeah, so, but if we want to add a, open space on those large swaths, then great, if there's a park there, and we have some fear that that's somehow gonna be redeveloped, okay, the zone is open space, but we don't have to go through every sliver and do it, I think we're, we're just getting there.
But Jim, this, you know, what we've said over the past several months, this is an area that's far different from everything that, that you guys have been involved with in your career.
Yeah.
The township has very few rights compared to a village or a city, and we've worked very hard for the last 25 to 30 years to have a semi-rural area. And there, there is a lot of push coming from different areas, that it's not just development, it's the ownership of it, boundary agreements, and the unique character of our area isn't something you're gonna find anywhere else in the state, so...
So, yeah, and I, I understand you, somehow you feel like the township space is threatened, I just, I don't see that, I'm not, you know, in too much of the political environment here, but that one, I, I took a portion of that table that we were just referring to, and it has a very small list, and we can even narrow it further, of what could be a permitted or special use there now. So, now it's a, it's a forest preserve, and someone wants to buy it and do something else with it, first of all, the township would have to sell it, there's your control. Secondly, the village would have to buy off on a zoning change, because if they came in and wanna put a McDonald's drive-through there, pizzeria, that's not in that table. It's a very limited table. So, that's our protection, that these, the open space is protecting us, it's not a threat to it.
I disagree, I disagree with you, because municipalities have much more authority than the township.
Yeah.
And we're, we're already facing issues, and it's not just the big issue, there, there is other, uh, areas around the township and around the village that put a lot of the properties that we have in place in jeopardy in some way, shape, or form, and it's not just residential home development. Could be commercial development...
Then we need to get a zone to open space really quick and offer another layer of protection on it. I mean, ultimately, it comes down to the political will of the elected officials. I mean, if they wanna rezone something, and someone comes forward with it, I mean, that's, that's their, their legislative prerogative. Anyway, that's all of this.
Okay, thank you for your input. Jim, uh, I did catch on one of your comments, and maybe that would be a good suggestion, is possibly, do we present a map that has, these are the identified large properties that we think would be subject to development, the, and these are the ones we want you to consider for possibly, uh, designating as open space. So, I think that might be helpful, then we could look at that and say, yes, we should probably designate this open space or something else. That might be something for the next meeting, or possibility, alright? Um, otherwise, is everybody...
Well, part of it too, it's not just so much that it's gonna be developed as something else. It's more like, well, here's the situation, where this intent here was, this was being set aside for a very specific reason, and that should be sustained into the future at all. So, you know, that coveted land in the middle of the development, because it's helping to control water, it's a natural area, and it was part of the deal, that there'd be some open space, you know, for the development. That's, the, the bigger threat is basically neglect, you know, like, oh, we forgot that it was that, and...
And maybe that's where Kathleen will come in, where she's going to be finding some of those places, like the covenants, and then she, that can be a separate list, that would be areas of concern or threat, or future threat.
So, just, Ralph, if I may, just one more comment. So, you know, here's the, the 2000 ver- 2004 version of our open space plan. This is not being considered by any of the municipalities around us.
Yeah.
And that's the problem. It, 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 there's no dialogue, there's no discussion, there's no knowledge of this.
Yeah, alright.
And the disidentified properties that we looked at 25 years ago in different parts of the township, well before the village was formed, of where we would prefer to have some open space. So, but what we're faced with today, it's, it's not a village problem, but the village is part of it, in that we've worked very long and hard to have those 1,600 acres of open space, and we're under pressure from elected officials that are not representing our area.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Within this program, so...
Thank you. Mike?
That's part of the comp plan, I mean, right there, that becomes part of the comp plan.
If you put that in part of our comprehensive plan, not, not the township we adopted.
We adopted it as part of our comp plan, then it does have weight on it.
Yeah, that's true.
And we should be, you know, pursuing that, fulfilling it, but it's, it's, I mean, we're talking about zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that would give it, because I understand, the township does not have, the township does not, and that's one of the reasons we got incorporated, is because we didn't have the weight with Elgin and all those other people coming in, so. But, I think it's a good solution, is that you take that comp plan, and then you add it to our comprehensive plan, and then that would then give the village the ability to enforce or support.
We'll check and see if it's even been overlayed in the comp plan, and I hope it got happened, but...
Part of it, Mike has the pin, but I think it'd be better than by reference. If we do it by reference, I mean, they update it, it gets updated automatically.
Alright, so, uh, I feel like we're spinning the wheels a little bit, uh, but I think we've made some progress, uh, on that. Um, so, looking forward, uh, for the next meeting, uh, which we'll also discuss as well, uh, into the next few months, we'll wanna discuss that as well. But, if we can just, the vision for the next meeting then, would be if we have, one, that map that kind of shows potential area, potential, potential areas, which might go along with, with that comprehensive plan as well, maybe that's something you, you're not aware of, don't have that as a resource, Jim, you could use that as well. But identifying places that could be, uh, listed as open space, and then presenting that to the board.
Yeah, I think what we'll do in the meantime, Kathleen and I will compare notes, and we'll have, um, the GIS person produce a map.
Okay.
Provide those pins.
Okay.
And I'm not sure how many different colors we'll have on it, but I don't wanna get it too...
Right, right.
And try and break this out. So, you can just see, I mean, maybe every little tiny, you know, tenth of an acre parcel is on there, you can just see what we're talking about.
Or, yeah, just pick the one color.
But we'll, we'll, we'll come up with a couple of different things. So, um, uh, just remind you, before I forget, we do have to discuss, you mentioned next meeting.
Yeah, I, I know, I, I do that, and we'll do that before we leave, so, yeah.
But to speed things up, and I'm always looking to get done, I'm sorry, but...
There's some things like F, the Gusterson Farm, it got redeveloped. There's still some farm acreage, it's 25, it's not been changed to RE1 or R1, but some of those, I think that we're trying to do, that we can make very quick progress of what's still farm, and what was subdivided and developed, that's still, some people think is still farm, but it's clearly an R1 or R2.
And I think there's examples of, I think, with Jim, we never got to it though, but the examples you have at the, at the end of the packet, which says, okay, this is really, it's zone farming, but it's actually a business, you know, or vice...
Right, yeah, we have, we have...
So, we should probably try to see if we can't get through some of those, because those, well, I think would be pretty quick.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I'm all for, all for it, yeah.
We'll get, we'll get to that next time as well, because I think these are pretty straightforward, especially the way you laid it out, uh, as well.
And if somebody doesn't think it is straightforward, can you call Jim and I, and we'll handle it before the next meeting?
Okay, uh, so, uh, open space was six, we're gonna skip, so, seven, and eight, nine, the status report we read, I know, unless there's something else, uh, about item 10, the approved, the schedule for September, October, November. So, we've been on it one, once a month, uh, I, there's, the way we kind of seriously discuss things, it just takes time. I'd like to still do two mu- two meetings a month if we could, uh, some, there are some limitations, but September 11th and 25th would be the second and fourth Wednesday of September, like to propose that for the meeting of next month, those meetings.
I know, I would not be able to make the 25th, otherwise I would, I agree, we should go back to two, two weeks.
Okay, so, no Chris, alright, alright.
I can't make the 11.
Okay, no Joe, alright. But I would have a quorum right now, it looks like, and in the buffer, just in case somebody can't do it. In October, uh, 9th and 23rd, uh, would be the second and fourth Wednesdays. And, uh, that's what I would propose.
What was it, Ralph?
9th and 23rd, the second and fourth Wednesday of October, October 9th, October 23rd. 9th and 23rd, the second and fourth Wednesday of October, October 9th, October 23rd. All right, seeing if not.
Now I'm hoping the 23rd is your, your public carry.
Keep hoping. We're going to see if this, we'll see while this progresses. I think, you know, I, it's a little sl- tough slug, slug going. I think once we start getting a good understanding, I think things will go. Uh, and then I'll just throw November 13th out as, as a backup. Or, so November 13th, it would be the second Wednesday in November.
Are we looking to do two in November?
Um, I doubt it because the 27th would be the day before Thanksgiving.
No, I'm saying go with the 6th and 20th.
I don't know about that because you are, I mean, it would be two weeks. You could do, if you went-
You got five Wednesdays in October.
Yes, so you could do the 6th and the 20th. I will not be here the 20th, but that's, I mean, that's fine if you get another meeting.
No, I mean, if, if, if we're only doing one, then I would go with the 13th also. But if we're doing two, we should do the 6th and 20th.
Yep, that's a good suggestion. I know I will not be here in the 20th, but that doesn't need to stop everybody else from, you know, making progress as well.
It's not that I want to do two, and I think it's important that you are here.
Okay.
So if you're suggesting the 13th, that's good.
Okay, and we'll try to make a goal for that one. So that would be one, two, three. That's five meetings, so.
Well, at our rate, we'll be going through March.
Oh.
No, I think we'll, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be saying, that's good and moving on and sending it to the board. All right, that's what I have. Let's see, so tentatively you've got those?
I do, I wrote them all down, yeah.
Okay, um, and I know a couple of people can't make them, but just keep us abreast if you know you can't make something. So just make sure we have a quorum, we need three. So keep us abreast. And we will try to make some good progress and, and get things wrapped up as best we can. But at the same time, we want to do a good job, right? All right, um. Any other questions or comments or do, do you want to fill anything in? I'm sure you called it night.
Can I just ask Jim a question? Uh, on your notes on page five, the head of the table?
In the staff-
Oh, in the staff notes?
Staff notes.
Yeah.
At page five, yeah.
There's some things there that had dashes and the, the paragraph that described it wasn't complete.
Was that just for reference though? That wasn't an official table, was it?
Yeah, I was just pulling this out, doing it really quickly and trying to update it and go through. And I was cutting things. This is a part of the, you know, I modified this.
Right, exactly, but I'm saying-
I was trying to, I was just trying to demonstrate the relatively limited special and permitted uses that are in those two zoning districts.
But that, that table's not part of the ordinance, correct?
Well, it's, it's part of our draft, yeah. I mean, it's a bigger table that includes all the zoning districts.
Okay, yes.
And it includes all of the land, it goes on. I just compressed it both ways. I compressed the-
I was going to say it wasn't a separate table.
Compressed the, the rows.
Well, I have two quick things.
Sure, go for it.
Mark, can you send me that use table? Because I, just the use table for me to review. I, I don't want to look at 900 pages.
5.1 or was it?
Well, yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Okay, Jim, thank you. So Ralph, can we at least tentatively look at a December or one or two dates in December? Just while we're, doesn't mean we have to have meetings, but if we're going to follow that schedule, I'd at least like to get them on the calendar.
Uh, I would say December 11th would be the second one and that would be the only one.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
So we could just add that and we can always, if need be, we can always cancel or say if we're all done by then. You know, if we're all done by then, we won't need it. All right, so we have meetings set up, six next meetings set up. The one, I did have a real, a comp, on the, on that table, back to that table that, that Mr. Kopeck was, it said cemetery as a special use. I don't know why I had a comment there. Cemetery is a special use in open space? Did we talk, I think there was some comments about cemeteries not being in open space, but cemetery being residential.
Jerry brought up cemeteries before and it did pop up on one of the township documents. There, there's a couple of people spoke up that they didn't think we should zone that open space. And that's, that's a, a means.
The cemetery is open space.
Somebody, somebody said there, it should be residential?
Yeah, it was kind of a joke.
Storage.
It shouldn't be called open space.
Yeah, I know.
It should be called a cemetery.
Jerry.
Yeah, yeah, let's just call it cemetery.
The interesting thing about that, which I dropped down, is there's no way you can put action on a cemetery because I know somebody who bought Longbourn Cemetery, they have the graves and, yeah.
Oh, here, oh, here.
Yeah, the graves out, put condos on it. We're going to go here more. That might be something that if somebody buys a cemetery and decides to move it, now it's all ours for public. Well, and, and then the township, uh, village, but, um.
Jerry, I saw that.
One hand card, well cemetery's a non-problem.
In Longbourn, I lived right quiet. I thought it was going to stay quiet. They moved, they moved the permanent residence, not so permanent.
So, so if you wanted to protect that, could you make cemetery a separate classification and then make it as a special use? I'm not, I'm just saying, can you? I'm not saying to do it, but how would you?
I'd ask Karen to figure that one out.
Because right now it's, it's listed under open space.
How many, how many, how many cemetery sites do we have? I know there's some very hidden ones.
Two, three, yeah, or private ones.
Yeah.
In fact, but just with me and Garby.
Nerfield and the one in the form of that.
That's a tiny one, right?
Still something.
I think somebody tried to say, make it open space so it's preserved and protected. That was the reason they did it.
But it shouldn't be called open space.
It could be, again, it could be a protected property.
Yeah.
It can come up.
Per- permanently.
Yeah, or dedicated, whatever.
But in our zoning code, open space is preserved and protected. I don't know legally what we can do with the cemetery, Jim. Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
I have seen him zone open space before.
Yeah.
For protection.
Yeah. Okay, so currently it is an open, zone open space with a special use, so, all right.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn, uh, do I, from Mr. Garcia II, by Mr. Teet. All those in favor to adjourn until the next regularly scheduled meeting of September 11th. Uh, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, motion adjourned, yes?
Are we having any, um, any of you, whatever, going to take the look at this issue with St. Charles?
2,000 units and-
Oh, LeFevre.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Individuals, whatever, because I, you know, September 4th is the first one.
Tomorrow.
I know my wife's getting involved. She said she's getting involved.